Well, she's also helping me. I had a little trouble getting in as well, so she took care of me.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to this February 4th, 2021, regular board work session. I'm going to call us to order. For our call, we have all directors in attendance except for Amanda Orozco Beach. But that we have a meeting agenda. Is there any action?
I've moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Did I miss a second?
No, second. I was trying to unmute.
Okay, so I moved by Chris, second by Matt to approve the meeting agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. First up in our agenda is information item for the English Language Learner Annual Report, and it says Karina's name on it.
Do you, um, good evening, Board Chair, Vice Chair members of the board. I have a little PowerPoint to share, but I have to admit, I'm not quite sure how to share on Zoom because I'm usually on Google Meet, so I may need Sarah's help as well, or unless Sarah would like to share it.
At the bottom, Karina, it says share screen.
The same way? Okay, we're gonna give it a shot. Ah ha.
Bingo.
Am I sharing? Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Pereira. That was really helpful. And so thank you for having me on the agenda today. This is interesting. This is really like a part two of a presentation that I usually give in the summer, as the summer ends, and this year, for obvious reasons, ODE didn't have some pieces together, particularly some data. And so in light of that, and given that we just received some new information related to House Bill 3499, Lisa Rigs and I thought it was a good time to share both pieces of information with you. You have some background information for this, and I will be referring to it, but I hope that you'll find the way I've broken it up on the slides a little bit easier to digest than all of those tables and numbers. So this is about kind of an update on our House Bill 3499 standing. Let me make sure that I'm, oh, there we go. First, I know there's a lot of terminology thrown around, and some of you have been on the board for a long time, and some are newer. So I'd like to just, if you give me a moment, review some key definitions because they get thrown around both by ODE and the data and just really by, by people in our, in education. There's three key terms related to English learners that you're going to hear me refer to, and you're going to see on the slides. One is the idea of current or active English learners. And when you hear that, I want you to think about the group of English language learners who are currently receiving language services support, are active kiddos. So you're going to hear current or active interchangeably. It just depends kind of on ODE's frame of mind for the day. The second group of students is something we call either former or monitored English learners. And those are students who had received services but were able to demonstrate English proficiency. So they're considered proficient. And for four years, we really keep an eye on those students. We check on their academic progress. We make sure that language is not getting in their way of their accessing the curriculum at grade level. And then the last group is really those students combined. So sometimes you'll see ODE use the words ever English learners. And when they're talking about ever English learners, they're talking about students who are currently active and students who are active at any time. So this is the largest pool of students. It actually could even meet kids who are considered post-monitored. That is, maybe they were active and they exited in fifth grade, and then they were monitored until ninth grade, and from 10th, 11th, and 12th, they're not even monitored, but they were EL at some point in time. So I hope that makes sense. I would love it if you're comfortable just giving me a thumbs up like, yep, that made sense to me. Thank you. I'm into checking for understanding. You never know these days. All right, so kind of having those definitions out of the way, you're going to see that some slides are going to address one group, and some slides are going to address another. That's really based on the way ODE collects its data for different different data points. Okay, so I'll try to make sure that I'm noting that as I'm sharing with you. So quickly, House Bill 3499, it goes back to 2015, legislature-approved funds, particularly for supporting the academic achievement of English learners. So many was first dispersed to us in 1617. They really looked at four key criteria in deciding which districts were going to get these funds. It had to do with English language proficiency, graduation rate, smarter balanced assessment, math growth, particularly in that middle school level, and then post-secondary enrollment. And what you see in parentheses are the weighting that ODE applied to each of these measures when deciding which districts needed the most support. So that's what that .45 and .35, et cetera, refers to. And I know those of you who've been on the board a while have seen me talk about this year after year. We were identified as not meeting some of those objectives, and we were considered a target district. There was a second level of district that needed a lot more support, but we were identified as needing support, which was great because then we were able to receive some funds to address student needs.
In 2015.
So I'm going to now, I'm going to keep in the, on the right-hand corner, the four measures, and you're going to see in blue the measure that the data I'm showing is referring to, just to kind of help you focus on all these different pieces coming together. At the time we got the grant, we reviewed the data. It was pretty clear to us that our area of biggest need was middle school math growth. So that's where we targeted our efforts. And we spent the last few years working with Shannon Purvenkin, Julie Rowell, and some amazing staff members, really working with our secondary math teachers to improve instruction and embed language, language engagement, academic optimism, clarity, et cetera. So that's been the core of our work with these funds. Couple of years ago, we, I think you're all aware, we were able to launch a dual-language program, and we were able to shift some funds to helping us with that launch. The reason being that that is pretty clear that by supporting the home language, we're eventually also supporting the second language development. And so that's why you see that English language proficiency in blue highlighted for that particular measure. So we've opened up those classrooms. We're now with four classrooms at Highland and one classroom at North, and we did use some of those funds. Our goal with using those funds was to improve instructional practice for Spanish literacy and also to do community building with our parents. So now, yes.
I'm going to interject and share with the board. A district actually was just recognized this past week, Tommy Rule L I Award for the work that Karina and her team have been doing, mainly around ELL, but specifically the DLI, the Dual Language Immersion. So acknowledge Karina and her leadership with that, with the team.
Thank you, Dr. Pereira. Yeah, that's really exciting. It was great. Dr. Pereira started talking about dual language pretty much the first year she got here, and it gave us a big, a big boost and pushed us forward into moving ahead, and it's so exciting. I can't wait. Hopefully, before the end of this year, I will bring to you at least some video clips of some of that instruction because it is, it's just, yeah, it's amazing. I'm still trying to arrange times for Dr. Pereira to go peek in. So, so the reason I'm doing the second half of the report is, in the summer, when I typically bring data to you, comparing our performance with other districts, that data was not available. So you're going to see a little bit of that here in relation to those four target areas. I'm going to look, I'm going to show you first, English language proficiency. And let me orient you a little bit to the slide. In this slide, each different color represents, light green represents Oregon, and the other colors represent neighboring districts. We are the blue, just to give you a sense. If you're wondering what the little clusters are, these are the measures of proficiency. The way we measure proficiency is using a tool called ALPA, and it's measured in four different domains: reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So you're seeing the lines, the scores along those domains. And what I want you to notice is that the blue, Gresham Barlow, pretty much every situation, we're right in line, definitely at about the state level or a little bit above, in terms of the growth our students are demonstrating in language proficiency. And this is the, the latest data that we have complete. This was 1819. So in the area of language proficiency, we really are about average and comparable to our, to our districts as we might expect. And this isn't an area that we've spent a lot of extra efforts on in terms of HB 3499. This was the area that was the biggest interest because, as I shared, this was the area where we really focused our efforts. We were really trying to get our secondary teachers, particularly at the middle school level, to refine their strategies for ensuring that English learners, whether they're active English learners or monitored English learners, were able to benefit from the instruction in the classroom and demonstrate progress on smarter balanced math. So again, I have, the comparison districts are the same ones, but this time what we're looking at is smarter balanced math median growth. So you're going to see light green is Oregon, and then blue is Gresham Barlow, and the districts I compare us to are David Douglas, Reynolds, and North Clackamas. I could have chosen others, but those are nearby and have some similarities to our district. So again, as you can see on the first one, that first cluster are active English learners. So those are kids who are still receiving support for language development. The second cluster to the right are monitored students. So those are students that have already met proficiency criteria. And what the measure you're looking at is their growth on math, and these are middle schoolers. So it's encouraging that at least for our active students, we're clearly pretty well above the Oregon median growth. We're still not, you know, I'd like us to be even higher, right? But we're, we're in line with what our neighboring districts are doing. It, with the monitored students, I wish we'd be higher. We're a little bit below the Oregon average in terms of being able to get those students at benchmark for, for math. This other chart kind of goes along with that, and that's the difference between, the chart on the top left is growth. The chart on the bottom right is performance. That's a hard chart to see. That tells us that students are growing, but we really, really need to work on getting them closer to that grade level standard. And you can see, you know, unfortunately, we are in line with our neighboring districts, but we all need to really work on progress in that area of math.
Do you want questions now or, or at the end?
Sure. And you know, it might be easy to do them now just because it'll be easier when we're referring to it. If everyone's comfortable with that, I don't want to speak for you, Board Chair.
All right, now go ahead. I didn't hear him say no. So on this, are we using similar materials between the districts? And is some of the comparison as well when students enter the program, if they enter at a higher age, not having English prior versus coming in at the kindergarten level? And so I'm just really curious what North Clackamas is doing that has their yellow line quite a bit higher.
Actually, you know, Chris, it's actually David Douglas that has it. Yes, it's kind of interesting. It surprised me as well, but it's.
Okay, North Clack is, is right in there, but that's David Douglas. Okay.
David Douglas. So I guess two parts to your question. One, you asked about the age of students coming in. I would say all of our districts probably have a similar variation of students who might even have been born here to students who are more recent arrivals. We're probably all in line more or less, so I don't think that's so much the difference. I do think we are using some different, some different materials at different places. So that's something that I've been trying to get David Douglas to, I, I think they need to share some of their secrets with us, right? To be honest, because we want to learn from those successes. I don't know that there's some sort of magic response, but I do also think in talking to their EL Director, Kelly Devlin, they have some, some MTSS systems in place that might be part of this as well. So that's definitely on my list of exploring further. Okay, I'm going to go to the next slide because I don't, I know we probably have other items on the agenda. And so staying with that, because I did more slides on math because that was our target. I really want us to look at what we're doing. So I just sent, shared some comparisons. But I want you to notice that despite the fact that, you know, some of our neighboring districts are doing a little bit better, we ourselves have consistently demonstrated progress on growth in middle school math over the last few years. So that's definitely a good sign. We need to still be going up. And in this particular slide, I even added sixth to eighth grade language arts because both are trending in a positive direction and demonstrating growth, and increased growth from year to year. So that's really encouraging, and we want to keep that trend and, you know, see those numbers going, going higher and higher. So then the other measures we looked at, so I, I reviewed for you the language proficiency, and then of course the math because that was our focus. Another measure that HB 34 looked, 3499 looked at was the five-year graduation rate for English learners. And I'm glad Carla's on this call because I'm not an expert on that language, and I know she is. So if you have a detailed question, I know she'll help me out. And this is a comparison with our neighboring districts. You're not going to see the same colors, and the reason is, I wanted to show you the difference between active ELs. Those are going to be in the dark blue. And remember, those are students continuing to receive language support during high school. And then former ELs, former English learners, and those are those students who had received English language learner support in the past but are now proficient. So one would expect that that particular group of students would be a bit more successful with graduation, and indeed, the data bears that out. But I think it's important to point out that, you know, we're not far off from our neighbors, but again, Chris, you know, in this case, we see North Clackamas really having, having some results that we need to look into, right? We're about where the state is, maybe a little bit lower, but definitely having room to grow in terms of five-year graduation for both our active and our monitored EL students, both groups. And I think it's, it's hard to speak about five-year graduation without taking a look back at the ninth grade on track, right, which tells us the progress. Because graduation is made early on in high school, right? Those freshmen are working on graduation from the beginning. And so I gave you, this is a piece of data just for our district that shows again that we are continuing to increase in the percentage of our English learners who are on track to graduate. So we would expect this, right, to eventually lead to much better and better outcomes in that graduation rate. And in this slide, I want to point out that, I'm sorry, that it is both current and it's current active English learners only. It's only that group. So that's really encouraging. We're really getting those freshmen in terms of earning their credits and being ready and prepared to head toward, toward graduation. And then.
I do have a question between.
Oh, yes, Robyn, please.
That one? I have a question between those two numbers because that's really interesting because it says that our graduation rate is lower, but our performance rate is higher than the other districts and even the state. So what would contribute to that if our students are performing lower or performing higher and at more at grade level but aren't graduating?
You know, there, there's so much going into that graduation right now. This slide is more around those ninth graders. Are you talking about the math performance in one of the past ones?
Yeah, the math and the English performance at a lower grade. It was sixth to eighth grade, and then all of a sudden, so we're higher than the other districts. But then it's like something in high school is happening to where they're performing better, but then they're not graduating.
Right, yeah. Um, you know, I think that's why the state tracks those different measures over time, right? So to help us really figure out, you know, what is happening with that transition from middle to high, right? So where, what, where do we need to step in and continue to, to provide additional support to students for the ability to earn those credits? Because that's really ultimately what gets you across that finish line for graduation, right? I don't have an answer to what it might be, but definitely as we work to address and ensure that we're supporting our English learners, whether they're active or monitored, that's definitely a transition we're looking at. And those transitions are always critical to look, look at all along, right, from fifth to sixth and from eighth to ninth, because sometimes that's where we lose students. Yeah, go ahead.
What would be interesting to see is how they're still performing because possibly their performance level, level might be still higher, but graduation rates might be lower depending on district standards of graduation and our coursework.
It could be. You know, we, we're working with students all along with sort of, you know, reviewing their grades and, and reviewing their credit accrual and making adjustments as we go. And our standards, I think our graduation standards have remained, you know, pretty consistent. So I don't know. I, I really don't know the answer to that, except to say that I do think we need to pay extra attention to that transition between eighth grade and ninth grade. And I know that we are doing some of those things already with some ninth grade special programs and some summer transition programs to really get students, especially those students who maybe have struggled a little bit in middle school, to go into high school feeling more prepared and more successful.
And I, I can just add to that a little bit, Karina, if, if it's helpful. To say, um, to answer your question about high school, I do think there's a lot of work to be done, period. There always is. And I, so I just want to acknowledge that yes, and is usually my response. So the and part is, is that, and then I think I mentioned this when we talked about the high school graduation rate, that our ninth grade on track, there, the students who first received that level of intervention in ninth grade are juniors right now. And so our graduation data, I think, does not yet reflect that particular intervention at the high school level. Now, what we, what we're not clear about is the degree to which the pandemic may have actually put us back in a way, unfortunately, and disproportionately. So we don't know yet if the progress that we were making in the last two years has, has kind of been truncated by this past year. But given the data that we have seen among all of our demographic populations, when we disaggregate it, is that we have seen a significant improvement, particularly for our Latinx students because of these ninth grade on-track cohorts at Gresham High School and San Barlow High School in particular, and because of their focus on ninth grade. And then the other piece I'll add is that when we focus with that kind of intensity on ninth grade, there's a lot of good research that shows it's highly predictive of graduation rates. Usually, your graduation rate is within a few percentages of your ninth grade on-track rate. So, and usually your graduation rate is a little bit higher because there are interventions that continue to happen after ninth grade. But I would say that from the perspective of your ninth grade on track, we have a lot of work to do, but that we were definitely headed in the right direction, and we saw a lot of improvement during our first two years of that implementation. And we'll, we'll kind of see what happened this year.
Great. Thanks, Carla. Chris, did you have a question?
I do. And, and if you've addressed it before, again, it could have been years ago, and it could have been 10 minutes ago, but does it depend on the age group if these are pull-out programs, if they're support during the school day, if they're elective classes? I mean, how do, especially high school, how are the kids getting the support compared to maybe elementary school? Because I know pull-out kind of loses you on the academic progress while you're trying to learn the language progress. So how is that all coming together?
That, that's a great question, and I did not talk about that today. I'm happy to give a, a quick review. We're really working to integrate language development with core instruction as much as possible. But we really look at the needs of students. By the time you get to middle school and high school, English language development is a separate course, but what we're trying to do is design those courses in a unique way so that, for example, high proficiency middle school students who are almost about to exit get the opportunity this year to take an avid ELD course. It's called avid Excel, so that it really works on academic, and if you will, student skills in addition to language development at the same time. And we're really excited for that. There's a lot of excitement even in, under remote learning. And then at the high school level, it is also the case that ELD is its own course. However, again, for more high proficiency students, those courses are actually integrated with English language arts. And so we're finding ways to really refine what students need when they're getting really close, instead of having them, you know, stay, take a whole class for just that little bit of language growth that's still left to be made. Does that help, Chris? Okay. All right. So I just have a couple more slides. Again, I've taken a lot of time, but I'm glad you're asking good questions. The last measure, the HB 3499 was looking at was post-secondary enrollment for English learners. It was only a very small percentage. It was .05 of the original weighting, but I still think, because they measured it, that we should look at it. One caution I would say about this, and I'm sure Carla would say the same thing, is this is tough to track because you have to keep track of where students went after they graduated. So it's data that can be a little bit, a little bit elusive, if you will. But again, if I compare us with our neighboring districts, what you'll see is the dark blue is active English learners and the light blue is former English learners. And we are actually, again, you know, you can see it all over the place, but for former English learners, we're outpacing the average for the state, and we are pretty much on par with, you know, Reynolds and almost North Clackamas. So again, we're in the range, but this is data that I think we need to get better at collecting and keeping track of because it can be a little bit tricky. So having kind of reviewed where we are in relation to everyone, I guess what, what I would add is we are continuing to grow above the state average in middle school math, which was our primary goal. So, so that's exciting. We're going to continue that. And we've made some progress, although ODE believes that we haven't made quite the level of progress that they would like us to make. And so we are actually currently on monitoring status for House Bill 3499, which means we'll continue to get some support from them. What that support will look like is a little bit unclear at the moment. It's something that they're just rolling out. But I think it's important to know that, of course, we're going to continue our efforts, and then they're going to give us some technical guidance as well. In terms of the areas for work, I just listed here what the Department of Education feels are primary areas for us to look at. So really making sure that our high school kids are making progress in language development. They do, they did add the area of exclusionary discipline and least restrictive environment, and that's a new area. So I'll be looking forward to getting some guidance from them about, you know, more details. And we, as a leadership team, have looked at this data and believe that we also have some pretty solid opportunities for growth in the ELA and MAC achievement and growth down at the upper elementary level, third through fifth. And the reason I say that is because I really believe that we are a K-12 system, right? And so what we do at those elementary grades really grows and develops the student that we're getting in middle school and high school. So we do need to keep circling back and saying, okay, let's go back to those upper elementary grades and making sure that we're delivering the kind of support and instruction for our English learners that leads to graduation and beyond graduation, right? That's what we, that's what we're looking at. So lastly, to give you an idea of the kinds of things we're going to be involved in, there are three things we want to continue with, without a doubt, and that is, excuse me, secondary math professional learning. We're going to stick with that because we're seeing some growth, and we want to see even more growth. The dual-language program, we're definitely moving forward with that and growing it by one grade level a year. And we're really going to continue to strengthen teams and efforts centered around equity, right? So we can make sure that that lens is brought to our instruction. There are some things we want to start doing more intentionally, including embedding strategies for supporting English learners in all of our professional learning. That's going to be something we're going to start emphasizing even more in our clarity work and making sure that we're integrating culturally responsive teaching as well. So those two things are things we're going to really call more attention to. We've been doing it, but we really feel like we need to call more attention to those. And then really building some clear expectations around how to really sheltered and scaffold content. Because what happens is, as Chris said, right, we have English learners, and they have to do two things. They have to learn language, but they also have to learn content. So that takes some extra efforts on the part of our staff. We really want to look to strengthen those MTSS systems to make sure that our students, when we see. um, when we see that they're not quite making the growth we want, that we can get them some timely support. And then lastly, really emphasize those post-secondary options for students all along high school so that they know, um, what they can really aspire to and what they're going to be interested in. So that is where we are and where I think we're going.
Any questions from the board?
I was just wondering if you've began, um, tracking the growth of our English language learners who are part of the dual language program. I'm just curious to see if by the time they're fourth, fifth graders, you know, the, the data that we've read of them being proficient in both languages will result in our district as well. So.
Yes. Myda, I'm so glad you asked that question because I meant to say that, you know, since they're only in kindergarten and first grade, we have such limited data. And because we're in CDL, it's even harder to get really good data, but I am so eager to, right, to start tracking that data as we go. We should be seeing some pretty good results in that fourth, fifth grade range, right? That's when we start to see it. So absolutely, we'll be tracking it. I'm actually, um, working with Darren King to, um, find a way to identify students who are participating in DLI within synergy. So it'll be easier for us to collect tho- those reports year to year.
May I have one more question, Robin, if I may? Um, and I think this one's for Karina, Karina and Carla maybe, or both? I'm wondering how, um, the collaboration between the two of you, as well as community partners or migrant and other, other community partners in offering more opportunities for post-secondary opportunities for ELLs. Um, I don't know if that's already in plan, like you mentioned the cla- the avid class for ELL students, but I'm wondering if there are other opportunities such as like CTE internships or like the leadership conferences that migrant net offers, those kind of opportunities for them.
Well, one thing I want to mention, and Carla probably has some more details than I do, um, migrant has been such a valuable partner. Um, one of the things that they were able to help us with last year was really going side by side with some of our migrant students who were juniors and seniors and struggling, um, and giving them that extra level of support to, to hold them, um, kind of do some handholding, right, and help them, um, through that finish line of graduation. So our partnership, um, with migrant is great. And in this past summer, they also offered high school opportunities for leadership, um, in doing some, um, environmental projects with, um, a local university. So I think that migrant partnership is really strong. I know we had talked with Dr. Pereira about, um, maybe engaging with an organization called Latinos in Action and, you know, just getting some different partnerships. Um, and so I'm sure Carla might have other things to, El Programa Espanol does some work with our students as well.
Yeah, I would say that the biggest, um, the biggest thing is trying to make sure that every student has access to a multiple array of college and career pathways and that they have a plan when they graduate. So we're looking at specifically how our EL students and our students with IAPs are more intentionally integrated into those opportunities. Some of measure ninety eight really requires that equitable assignment to, um, on-time graduation. And so we have been working with our counselor and special assignment to design, uh, and, and our schools to really look at the course assignment starting in ninth grade because that's a huge predictor. And then like, um, Kedina said, certainly looking at secondary math with our math coach. Um, and some different ways we might restructure some of our scope and sequence in math. Someday, just to start thinking about how we can, um, better tee kids up for the array of pathways, which we know helps our EL students. And then finally, something we're really excited about is our platform that we use called School Links, um, where every student is being introduced, starting, um, right now in high school, but working towards introduction in middle school to the platform so that they can document their experiences and build an education plan and profile. And we recently added a component to that platform where we have a partnership with the National Student Clearinghouse so we can see post-secondary enrollment, um, for every one of our students who graduates. I don't know if Karina even knows that, but that will actually give us really accurate data on post-secondary enrollment. Um, and we'll be able to pull that annually, like every quarterly, starting this year. So that, that'll, all of those pieces together, um, are elements of what we're doing, Myra. But, um, the, the biggest driver from what I do is the equitable assignment to on-time graduation.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you.
Let me see, uh, Chris, how it's hand up. Chris, do you have a question?
I did just one, another question. Oh, okay.
You still have a question too?
Oh.
Um, I do.
Yeah, go ahead. And I'll go after you.
Okay, mine, I think is quick. I just was curious, what are our top five or 10 languages that we're supporting? It sounds like a lot of it is Spanish, but what are our others that we're working with?
Yeah, um, so by far, Chris, absolutely. Spanish is definitely our top language. Um, Russian and Ukrainian are sort of the, the next ones down. Then we, um, it's interesting, a language that's really moving up is Arabic speakers. So we have a much larger population of Arabic speakers across the district. Um, as a matter of fact, okay, I'll put in a plug for this. Uh, we have a bunch of high school students taking the stamp test next week. Um, and that is a test where they get the opportunity to demonstrate the, their native or home language skills and actually get a seal of bilinguacy. You've heard me say that. In this year, um, three of those students are Arabic speaking. So that's really exciting to see. Um, and then beyond that, Chris, we, we really don't have any, uh, we have a smattering of different things. We have some interesting language such as Karen and Mong, um, you know, more unusual East Asian languages. And we have the smattering of, you know, one or two German speakers and one or two, you know, just more like that. We don't have the Somali speakers that our neighbors, um, in David Douglas, for example, have. We have a few, but we just don't have that, um, that community in our boundary.
Hi, Robin.
I, yeah, I love that we have the certificate of bilinguacy. I think a lot of times we're looking at the challenges of our, uh, bilingual student population and how to get them to grade level. And we don't always see it as a resource. But I really love that we have that six certificate of bilinguacy and even looking at, you know, even more certificates that we can be able to supply our students, you know, whether that's, you know, translation training and so forth, and really promote our multicultural population as a real strength. Um, and there are challenges. And I had a couple of questions about some of the, um, the categories. There was migrant category and then there was mobile category, and I wasn't sure how you define those.
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. So migrant is a very specific definition. It has to do with, um, students whose parents, whose families actually move for employment in some specific fields. And those fields are, um, nurseries, farm work, orchard work, fisheries and dairies. And so it's a very, uh, specific federal cal- uh, qualification. And mobile is a little bit different. It's really about those students who move around just a lot. It could be for socioeconomic reasons. It could be, um, you know, for lots of different reasons, but not necessarily tied to employment. So migrant really hinges on the family employment in those categories being the reason for the move.
And another, uh, thing, the long term, the almost twenty percent of, uh, long-term English laning, language learners, what are some strategies that you're using to improve those numbers and what are contributors to that particular challenge?
Yeah, boy, that is a group that, um, that we, we really want to focus on and we always focus on. And it's, uh, it's, it's been tough to make, you know, the progress I'd like to see. So there, those long-term learners are, um, students who, it depends on which definition you looked at, but, um, generally it's taken to be seven years or more in the, in the program. And honestly, some of those students are students who are dual identified. That is, they have an IP in addition to being English learners. So they present some different challenges in terms of how to really support them. Um, some of those students are students who have attendance or mobility issues. Um, it is definitely, Robin, an area where we really have to focus. Some of the things we've done for that is we have tried to design courses that are more strategic in, um, addressing the specific needs of long-term learners, which tend to be around literacy. So they are orally proficient, but where they tend to be struggling is in reading and writing in English. So we've tried to design some classes that are high interest that really try to target that. But it is definitely an area that we're working on. And as a matter of fact, we often collaborate with our neighbors in those districts that I shared in order to really design and share ideas about supporting that population of students.
And Karina, to build on what Karen, on what, on what Robin, um, was talking about, um, in terms of, of our secondary, secondary level students. Um, are we, and this is probably for Carla, uh, opportunities for students to continue with their home language growth, uh, such as just courses where students will be able to, to, to get college credit? You know, looking at, at teachers being duly, duly, um, endorsed to provide college credit, for students who are taking like medical terminology, Spanish course in high school or just advanced language courses in high school so that they can get college credit.
Myda, I, I'll let Carla maybe, I don't know if she has some answers. I can tell you that, you know, we are still offering like Spanish for Spanish speakers, for example. Um, and we're hoping, right, as those dual language students start to move up, we're going to be designing middle school and high school courses that really are tailored to celebrating that bilingualism and that bilinguacy and giving them choices. I would say I don't think we're there yet. I don't know if Carla has something to add.
So are we encouraging teachers to be accredited to offer that college credit? Like I know, like our Japanese teacher is accredited, right? So are any of our Spanish teachers or any of our other world language teachers accredited to provide our students college credit since they're offering the instruction already? That's, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. I can't answer that right now. And I don't know if Carla can, but it's certainly something I can.
It has to do with our dual credit articulation agreements, mostly with Mount Hood Community College. And so that, where we had started down the path of really identifying which courses need to be dual credit identified. And then do we have the right teachers with the right credentials? Because as you know, those teachers either have to have a master's in that language, just not teaching that language, or they have to take ongoing graduate credit, um, that get, that would lead them to a master's in that language and paying for it as well as the time is, has been the challenge. We were starting down that path with Mount Hood Community College. And we, the other piece is that sometimes you don't want kids to take those courses for college credit because if they, um, if they are not in a transfer program, then sometimes they're using, depending on their pathways, depending on their goals, um, you want it to be purposeful college credit that could transfer or could go towards something else. So we, there's, there's multiple, uh, responses to that, Myda, but basically, um, with some changes at Mount Hood this year, we need to reboot what we are looking at for dual credit for our, um, all of our students and then the world language opportunities for our native speakers definitely fits into that. Um, and there's a, there's a cost that we are working on to, um, address as well.
And Carla, also, let's, uh, be reminded of AP courses when, when you receive, um, uh, three, well, four and fives. Um, and that, uh, definitely that becomes a college credit in any of those languages. And it can be, um, uh, matriculated into that university or college. And then another important thing to, um, consider is the policy can allow, uh, along with the state, the, the credit, um, for those, uh, that have passed an AP test, sort of like the stamps. We get the, we get the, we pass the stamp and then we get that on our, on our graduation, um, diploma. But we can also look into that, um, that credit for a course.
So are, so are we currently off, we're looking into offering AP language and AP Lit in Spanish?
Oh, in Spanish. It's also, what I can tell you is at Gresham High School, they would, they're definitely offering AP Lang and Lit. The question is if, is it in Spanish? I don't know. We'll have to look at where their planning is right now. They're actually.
I'm talking about AP classes, uh, language courses, not, um, in, in, uh, courses around content that is in Spanish is different than courses that are, uh, language-based for language course credit.
Right, yeah, I'm talking about AP language, Spanish and AP literature, Spanish literature.
And Carla, let me correct you just a little bit because Myra, they're looking into moving to AP next year. So those courses are being considered is what I'm hearing. And I thought Carla missed, and I may have misheard, said they were offering those now.
No, yeah, they're developing those at Gresham High School. Yes, sorry.
That's great. Thank you.
Um, Karina, my, I had a question about, um, the actual proficiency determination. Um, there was a middle school slide, um, that looked like, uh, we were actually trending above maybe our, our peers, um, our regional neighbors in reading and writing and listening, but speaking was where we were particularly, um, lower. And I'm just curious, because, um, I know with any language proficiency tests I've taken, speaking is, is typically a fairly subjective determination. I'm curious what the process is for that.
Yeah, um, you know, so the measure, the only measure that OD currently accepts for proficiency is the ALPA. So it's that language proficiency assessment in students. Um, if you can imagine yourself taking a test on the computer and wearing one of those little headphones with a little speaking part. Um, sometimes we go through periods where, uh, students get some really glitchy results on that. And I don't really know what that's about because you're absolutely right. The typical progression for proficiency is to, um, definitely demonstrate proficiency in listening and speaking before demonstrating it in reading and writing. That was a pretty small difference. So I don't know if it was statistically significant and if it would hold year after year.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
I, I don't have a question. Just a comment in that, um, wanted Karina to just kind of quickly briefly highlight the newcomers program because I think that's also significant and plays a part in this as well. Um, and that's a really neat program we have for K eight and I wanted her to share that, um, just a little bit. But also just wanted everyone to keep in mind, as you look at data, uh, you want to look at cohorts and not just the post-mortem piece because just what we're seeing now is just the after effect and you're comparing one kid to the next kid next year as opposed to the same kid as you go through. And then the other thing with data is you want to look at the number because I know our numbers are a lot smaller than some of the larger districts. Um, and that makes a difference in a percentage.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Pereira. So newcomers, um, again, those of you who've been in the district a while are probably aware. We have a fabulous third through eighth grade newcomer program. Those are students who have been going to school in the US, uh, two years or less. A lot of them have only, believe it or not, we have had students arriving during the pandemic as newcomers, um, which has been, it's been amazing to me how well our, um, teacher and educational assistant in that program have really welcomed those students and helped, helped them really, um, be part of the school community, even though they can't be there in person, which is hard. But those students spend anywhere from a year to a year and a half, rarely two, in a classroom together with a focus on English, but of course they're learning content as well. And then after that time, they go ahead and return to their homeschool. We also offer that newcomer program at the high school level so that, um, students who arrive, say as eighth graders or ninth and above, have that opportunity to really go deep in developing their English language skills while at the same time they're taking classes in English. Um, and those programs are terrific if you ever have a chance to visit them. Um, the progress, the motivation of those students, um, is, yeah, it's, it's tremendous to see. Yeah, I know, I know. Ms. Gomez knows that really well.
It was my favorite class.
Exactly. Thank you. I remember that.
I think John liked it for the food, but.
That would be true. It was a fun place to go.
Awesome. Well, I really appreciate, um, the interest you have all taken in wanting to learn more about all this, um, all this data and information about our English learner programs. Thank you.
Um, Karina, I'm sorry, I, I had one other question that I, my page is filled with scribbling, so I'm trying to track all my questions as I went, but. Um, one, as you look at former English learners and their median SBA score, uh, how do those compare to non, um, are, are they never English learners? I'm not sure what the right term is, but, um, native English speakers, how, how, what is our comparison? Is it?
Yeah, we, um, it's definitely, there's a gap between our former English learners and our never English learners. So that's another area that I believe we really need to focus our efforts on, right? And in that area, where we really need to go is ensuring that our content teachers, so that is our teachers who are. so that is our teachers who are teaching math, have the strategies needed so that students who, you know, just because they met proficiency on ALPA doesn't mean they're, you know, fabulous and amazing on English in every way. And sometimes, um, there are still some challenges that they face. So we really need, uh, want to ensure that we empower our content teachers with strategies to get those, those students closer to the way those never, you're right, never ELS are performing.
Well, thank you. I, I distinctly remember a couple of years ago at a work session like this where you, you said, um, our target, we're going all in on math improvement. And so I, I laud you for the improvement there and look forward to greater success as we move forward. And, um, yeah, uh, thanks for joining us, Karina.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move to announcements. Um, we're gonna follow this in a different room, a different Zoom virtual room, uh, for our regular board, uh, business meeting, right here at 7:00 PM. And, uh, there being no other business before the board, this work session, we're adjourned.